Okay, welcome to the June 20th Board of Education meeting of Sag Harbor School District. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi Scott. Okay, nobody has signed up for public input one, so we'll go on to Board of Education recognition.
Of me.
This is gonna be a group effort, but I'm gonna start.
That's right, this is class, that's a class of us.
We want to recognize Susan Consella, who has been an exemplary member of the Board of Education. She's served several terms, and when I was thinking about sharing some of my thoughts with you tonight, I was thinking about what the responsibilities are of the Board and Board members, and one of the primary responsibilities is fiscal oversight, and I can confidently say that you have been the strongest Board member I've ever worked with in terms of fiscal oversight, and you have really helped this district continue to be stronger and stronger fiscally. You have worked so collaboratively with everybody on the Board and with the administrators. You've always had children's best interests at heart, and I think you've been a quiet, steady, insightful force on the district, day after day and year after year, and from the bottom of my heart, I just thank you for all of your efforts, and I hope to see you at the table again soon, although your husband Gene is probably cringing somewhere as I say that. But the amount of hours, particularly with serving as President, the amount of hours that you have dedicated to the children of this district is enormous, and your impact will be felt for years to come, and I just want to thank you so much for everything you've done.
Thank you, Chris.
Susan, I just want to echo that and say thank you for all of your years of dedication, all the time that you've put in, and also support what Chris said as far as your fiscal oversight. The statistical analysis that you did over the years throughout all of the contract negotiations have been invaluable to what we've done as far as the negotiations, and it's always, it's a pleasure working with you, and I do hope to see you back again soon, and thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thanks, Chris, and thanks Teresa.
Susan, ever since I've known you, you've been involved in public service. I think I met you at a pre-kindergarten something or other, and you were bringing things to some event somewhere. Your dedication to the community is admirable, and I appreciate your public service, and it was great working with you on the Board. Thanks.
Thanks Tommy John.
I just want to say thank you because you've been a great role model for me as a newer Board member. Your work ethic and your attention to detail, and your willingness to have an open mind about issues as we kind of debate back and forth, I've really looked up to you as a role model, and I will sincerely miss you, so thank you very much.
Thanks very much. So, I just have to say that probably longest standing at this point for many years on and off the Board, I do think that you've probably brought the best fiscal management to the Board, of course, with our amazing business official that we have here. Collaborative, you guys have just been outstanding. But more importantly for me, I love the fact that it's the first time in a very long time where you have, I've been able to work with Board members, where we've been able to agree and to disagree, and to sit back and reflect on two totally opposite opinions, and leave the room with total opposite opinions, and still manage to maintain a wonderful friendship, a level of respect that is beyond my, exceeds my expectations, and that is, takes a very special person to do that, and you are that person. So you're not only my friend, as everybody already knows, but as my, as a Board member and a Board President, I just say thank you for being able to always agree to disagree. You did it with respect, kindness, and intelligence, and we will be missed, and I look forward to seeing you back here very soon. And I do want to also add that you spent many of nights in this room behind us, sitting on those chairs, learning the law, learning the process, and it showed throughout your leadership skills. And I think the newspaper quoted it the best by saying that we had great leadership with Susan Consella, so thank you, and we'll be able to spend more nights together. Thanks guys, thank you Sandy, thanks guys. It's been a pleasure and a privilege to serve for this Board of Education. I'm really sad I'm not gonna be here with you next year, but I'll be in the room.
Ah, don't worry. Yeah, baby.
You know what? Come on, let's all stand and give her a standing ovation.
Stephanie couldn't be here tonight, but she wanted to let you know that she loves you, and she's really sad that she's somewhere on a plank.
And she'll probably thank you, I'm sure it's some stuff.
Thank you guys. So if you could just open up, there's two little things on there that we'd like you to open in public. That's why we put a lot of tissue paper wrapping in it. Not the envelope, but there's just two things in there for your new home that you're moving into.
The little big as a school.
The car base of the school.
And they're wrapped in scarlet and black, in case anybody wants to know, and Stephanie made sure there was rails on the bag, so I just want everybody to know that.
That looks like elementary school.
That's great.
We should sign with that.
Very cool. Where did you get that?
Yep, and then that's the high school.
And here's the high school.
And here's the high school, yep. So you always remember the years.
We may have to do slight modifications after the bond party.
After the bond party, we'll change it. It will be scarlet and black though still, so yeah.
Okay. That's good, that's so cool.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay.
And then there's another envelope.
No, 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 you can open that later. Just a little something from the other Board members.
Okay, all right. Next, we're on to our tenure recommendations.
Yay! Exciting times.
So can I have a motion for tenure recommendations one through three, please?
So moved.
Okay, any, any?
We did want to say each one and offer them a congratulations from our administrators, so if we could say each one. So Kate Montaldo in the early education birth through grade two tenure area, if we could offer our congratulations from our administrators as well, congratulations.
Yay, welcome. Pardon me, is the administrator gonna say thank you?
We, we shifted from that last year because our attorney's recommendation is to shift from that, so he's not, he's not a fun guy in that area, so we moved, he moved it just congratulations, but we're so glad you're here. And then approval tenure for Kim Spolovich in nursery kindergarten in grades one through six tenure area, congratulations on behalf of all the administrators.
Thank you, Ken.
And approve Brittany Morades as the middle school assistant principal tenure area, congratulations.
Congratulations.
And I think we may have on our, I'm gonna pause for just a moment because I think that do, does our, our journal folks from the newspapers want to get a quick picture of those folks before, because they may not want to stay through the whole board meeting.
Whole board meeting, yes.
I'm just guessing here, I'm just guessing.
Brittany, that would mean you, I saw the face.
You wanna go home and do report cards, right? Absolutely.
Wow, great.
So do you want, we can pause for a moment.
We can pause a moment, yep. I should've told you to put your lipstick on first. You guys look shy, yes, thank you very much for all you do for us.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're very patriotic, by the way, I like that.
It's very spiritual.
Yes, thank you. Welcome, welcome all three, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next guys, can I have a motion for consent agenda items four through 23?
Oh yeah, superintendent's report, baby.
Superintendent's report? Oh, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, you know that.
Going back to page one.
We did a motion, but we didn't vote on the tenure.
Oh yeah, we gotta vote on tenure.
Oh, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carry. Okay, superintendent's report.
Okay, if we can start with our, Jeff Nichols, our principal for the middle high school.
Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna go over the past events, it's been a busy time of year, I'll try to go through this quickly. Middle school band and chorus concert, the 24th of May, the Common Core Algebra Regents, Algebra II Regents, this is a transition year, so students are, were able to sit for the Common Core Algebra II and the Algebra II and Trigonometry assessment, which is the old Regents assessment, but that was June 1st. June 2nd, academic awards, which we completed in a record 51 minutes, which is very short, but it was very good. June 3rd and 4th, the NISMIA solo festival. The sixth, two events, the sixth grade trip to the Bronx Zoo, the New York State Grade Eight Science Exam Orchestra, the seventh for middle school and high school, the eighth high school band and chorus, as part of the middle school transition program, the fifth graders visited Pearson on the 9th, student council elections, the 9th and 10th, June 10th, the high school prom at the Muse over in Southampton, it was a beautiful venue for the event. June 13th, last day of school for all students, the 14th through the 22nd, Regents assessments and finals, a little bit more than a week, baccalaureate ceremony, which is when the seniors have an opportunity to thank those people in their lives who helped them arrive at this point, June 16th. The Teeny Award winners, which is basically our equivalent, or the East End equivalent of the Tonys, I believe, technical honors and recognition, I'll let you read that, but our students did quite well across the board. Those are the honors and recognition and below the awards that were given out. Some pictures, if you notice the guy on the right, he got a special haircut for this.
I love it.
He looks great, very, very happy, all those kids, it was very, very nice. Some end of the year moments, these looked as though.
They're matte.
No, these were middle, middle school. It's middle school.
Coming to.
Oh yeah, got it, yep.
Looks like Miss Hennessy.
Yeah.
Us visiting morning program and then student elect.
Right, the lower left picture threw me for a loop, but yes.
Me too, right, you, me too.
Yeah. So those, on your right is the 11th grade king and queen, if you will. Above is academic awards with Mr. Nichols in his pink coat, and some other pictures as well. Mr. Remson conducting, looks like the orchestra. Oh, senior prank day, that was pretty harmless.
We could give us an organic, they pitched me on this, this could be the organic solution we've all been looking for, you know, and reduce our carbon footprint, so I thought that was very cute.
Is that what you want, or is that what you mean?
Yeah, that's what they tried anyway.
And fertilizer.
Yeah.
So this was interesting, Margaret Mato organizes a bunch of events to bring attention to the college selection process in a healthy way. Part of this day that was interesting is that the Pearson teachers sit on a panel and talk about their own experiences, their own first years in college, which was pretty interesting to listen to. Those are some of the students who attended that event. Upcoming events, June 20th today, the first rehearsal for middle school Moving Up, which is middle school graduation tomorrow, the second day. Wednesday at 10:00 AM is eighth grade Moving Up, eighth grade graduation. A new tradition, hopefully this year, on the 23rd, which is Thursday, the seniors will be going down to the elementary school, those who show up, and I'm hoping that most of them will, although 8:45 is a difficult time. They will be showing up and making an appearance at Morning Program, and Mr. Malone has worked with the senior class advisor, Ms. Marionfeld, to help organize that. High school graduation rehearsal, I'm hoping that the 8:45 appearance will result in the majority of students being there at 9:30 AM rather than waiting. And then finally, on Saturday at 5:00 PM, high school graduation, and the good news is that right now, the weather is calling for pleasant conditions Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So hopefully not a repeat of last year in terms of the weather at least.
Because we're now missing trees there, so there's not as much shade as there used to be.
Maybe have a couple canopies.
But that event usually is at less than an hour and 20 minutes as well, hour and 25 at the longest, so we're hoping that, you know, things go well.
We've also invited our local newspapers to the Morning Program event, so that they'll have a chance to capture, because a lot of our seniors have been all the way through since kindergarten, so this is exciting.
Most do, yeah.
I think it'll be inspirational for our little ones, too. Mr. Malone?
Thanks, Mr. Nichols. Good evening, everybody. Just as it's been busy here at Pearson, we've been having a busy and very successful month of June thus far. Just like to commend everybody at the elementary school and all the, all the extra effort that's gone into making all of these events that have happened and the upcoming events so successful. We've talked throughout the year on the installation of the foundations program at grades K through two, and next year, we're going to move that program to grades three, so we've already started with some of the professional development. Our third grade teachers worked with Carol Mason, who's been supporting the staff thus far, getting an overview of the grade three program, and then next year, in the fall, and even next spring, we're gonna have her back to continue to support the teachers so that the instruction remains high level. We've, for a long time, had, have had a great relationship with the groups that run the tennis instruction down at the park, and our phys ed teachers have set up a nice program to bring our fourth graders in the spring, and then fifth graders again in the fall, down to those tennis courts, they receive some high-quality tennis instruction, and from that, many of the boys and girls have really developed a love for that game, so it's a, it's a great extension of our phys ed curriculum, and meets one of the important New York State standards of introducing students to different venues for athletic activity or physical fitness in the community, so that, that happened over the, over the last couple weeks. Thanks to Mrs. Krul and everybody that's a part of the collegiate baseball program here in the Hamptons, we, we actually had the Sag Harbor Whalers at Morning Program, and obviously the boys and girls love seeing these college athletes come in, two of whom are Pearson graduates, Colin and Nick, so that was, that was really great. But I think most importantly, the, the student athletes talk about the importance of continued effort in the classroom, and how they need to make certain grades in order to continue playing, and when the, when the young men went through the different colleges and universities that they're attending all over this country, it was pretty impressive, so we thank, thank them for coming, and I know that a lot of the boys and girls with their families have been heading down to the games to root on the local team. On the 3rd, our kindergarten students performed their annual kindergarten show, Ms. Montalvo's class, along with her colleagues' classes, did a, did a great job, they studied space, and each took a component of space and put together a very entertaining show, chock full of a lot of the learning that they, they were able to achieve over the last, last few months in the kindergarten rooms. It was, it was a great afternoon, the, the day before, we had the shows performed for the, for the school as well, so everybody got a chance to see it. Our fourth graders, which I think Mr. Nichols mentioned, the eighth graders sit for this test as well, our fourth graders sat for the science exam, New York State test, there's a performance component as well as a written piece, and they did, they did an outstanding job with that. Our different performing arts shows continued, we had second grade on the 9th, and grade three on the 13th. Couple Fridays ago, we had our kindergarten visitation day, where next year's kindergarten students spent some time in the kindergarten classrooms, and started to become acclimated to the building, got to meet the teachers. The students, along with their parents, are beginning to get a good understanding of what next year has in store for them, so we're really excited to, to start off another, another group in the Sag Harbor School District. We had a fun visit at Morning Program last week, a couple girls in the fourth grade, another great example of the service learning projects that happen all throughout the district. Two girls helped the school raise some money, that was then donated to one of the local wildlife refuges, and they came to Morning Program, which we held outside, and they brought a rescued, I think we had a red-tailed hawk and a, and an owl, and they, they were able to walk around the whole crowd, and the kids were just amazed, and got real close to these animals. I, I stood by really closely because it made me a little nervous, seeing these big birds right by the kids, but, but all went well. And then just, just this past Friday, on the 17th, we held our fifth grade celebration in the gym, this is our fifth grade graduation, our way of congratulating and sending our fifth graders off to Pearson Middle School. If you, if you haven't attended the event in the past, it's a real upbeat event, the, the children themselves are the performers during the celebration, they're singing, they're speaking, they, they really do a great job of taking a walk down memory lane, they go through, through the years from kindergarten up through fifth grade and highlight all the, all the different achievements. Mrs. Spolovich, the fifth grade teacher, along with her colleagues, did an amazing job, as well as our art department and music department, and everybody really pitches in to make that event such a success. And in the afternoon, the boys and girls and their families spent some time down at Long Beach, kept the celebration going, so it was really a great day. Just this afternoon, we had our Moving Up Day, which provides the students an opportunity to visit briefly with next year's teacher and next year's classmates, and that seemed to go very well. Here's a picture of a, a book exchange that was organized by one of our second grade classes, Ms. Levine, Ms. Price, and Ms. Russell's class. They encouraged all the students in the school to look through their independent reading libraries and select a book that they'd be willing to donate to the book exchange, and then one day at recess time, everybody had a chance to pick a new book, which they could then enjoy possibly during the summer, use as a part of their summer reading assignment. So that was, that was very successful. Here's, here's a few shots of the fourth grade photo exhibit, which is supported by the Rudishan Trust. Kathy Creedon opened, as she's done for many years, the John Jermaine Library, where we are able to display the artwork. The two art teachers, Ms. Mandell and Ms. Armuschemitz, along with our guest photographer, Clarence Shepherd, take the children around town, they visited the longhouse out in East Hampton and just took some amazing photographs. In addition, I don't know if you can see in the, in the lower right-hand corner of each picture is a, a barcode, which if read using a barcode reader on your, on your device, you could then hear the students recite poems that they wrote themselves to match up with the photographs. It was pretty, pretty impressive, really, really well done, and those, those photographs and the project will remain on display for a couple weeks down at the temporary site. Here's some great shots of the fifth grade celebration.
Look at that.
Yeah, it was a fun, really fun afternoon.
Ethan.
And then upcoming events, tomorrow, here in our music room, Pearson's music room, we have our pre-K Moving Up ceremony, so always, always a great event. And then now we're in the midst of all the, the fun end of, end of year events at the elementary school, the field days, some great field trips throughout, throughout the area. Beach Day is Thursday, where the whole school heads down to Long Beach. Weather looks pretty good, we're, we're hoping any of those clouds are just gonna, gonna dissipate. And then we close things out on Friday with a 10 o'clock dismissal, and then we'll take some days off, and then some of the boys and girls are invited back for summer school, that will begin on July 5th, and that runs for six weeks. It's a program in the morning from 8:30 until noon, where the boys and girls that could benefit from some extra math or ELA instruction receive that.
Hey, thank you.
Thanks for having us, too, Mr. Malone, we love it.
Mr. Malone had a part in the kindergarten show that was pretty cool, he gave them permission to take a field trip to the moon, so it was pretty cool. I'm, I'm happy to say that we finished up for our interscholastic athletics for the season, and we, we gave out the awards at the celebration on June 9th. The night was highlighted by many things, Collier was receiving an award from his, from his peers, he was very excited, it was a tremendous evening. I didn't break 51 minutes, it was more like an hour and 51 minutes, but we're, we're working on it. Yeah, I thought the night went well, it was really a nice to celebrate the amount of athletes, and it's a good visual, visual, excuse my speaking, visualization of when you can see a large percentage of the student body that has participated and will be awarded on that night, it's nice for the community to see how many kids actually get out there and, and play for us. We're transitioning now into our summer schedule, we're gonna have a, we're gonna do a, we have a big board in my office now, and I've encouraged all the athletes and all the athletes' families to, that's registration is gonna really guide what we're gonna be offering for next year, so I can get a really good litmus test about how many athletes we're gonna have participating on each team, so that, we're gonna have a open signups all summer long, and they can sign up for every, every sporting event that they'd like to do next year. I encourage the Board of Education to stop down and see how we're gonna direct our athletic programming, you know, with that signup. Another thing that we're using is, we're gonna be using a family ID sports registration. Essentially, what this is gonna do is gonna give the parents the ability to see that they have handed in important items of paperwork, like physicals and code of conduct, similar to parent portal, where you can get a, you can also submit documents through this, through this process, to ensure that your athlete has all the necessary paperwork before the first day of, of practice. Speaking of dates over the summer, we have tentative, our second round of physicals will be on August 5th and August 12th, that is subject to change after the Board of Education meeting on July 5th, but right now, we're concentrating trying to go for those two days. First day of football practice is a week earlier than everything else, be August 15th, we'll be sending some athletes over to Southampton this year, at the, all levels of football, including modified JV and varsity. First day of practice for all the JV and varsity fall athletes will be August 22nd. It's hopes that the family ID and just really keeping open line of communication throughout the summer can make sure that all the athletes are ready to go by that August 22nd date. The first day of practice for the 7th and 8th grade or modified students will be September 7th, and that should be after we return to school. And again, the, the next slide, there's a lot there, but it's, we're really highlighting the fact that now that we don't have the auditorium online, the, you know, the facilities staff really has been converting every which space from music rooms to amphitheaters to, they've just been doing a great job. The crew has been working tirelessly, we're setting up for, it seems like an event almost every single day. I've been working pretty closely with Mike, preparing for the, for the construction projects, and we're on, we're on a good schedule there. I had the privilege of meeting with Mr. Greg Stanley the other day, I think his knowledge is going to be, is tremendous, it's a tremendous donation from, from both his time, knowledge, equipment, and we're gonna grow some grass back there, so it's, it's gonna, we're gonna catalog it through pictures, and we'll update the Board periodically on, on the progress we're making back there. But he just is, he's the sod god, he knows what he's talking about, all right? And then I've been working with, in conjunction with Jennifer, we've been touring the grounds, trying to really put a cap on our building condition survey and future plans, and, and that's been going pretty good, so.
And our construction updates, it'll be Mike from Donovan, and then, and then we'll have Larry from PBS come to us, Mike, okay? You can have this, you can, you can do this yourself.
Okay, sure, thank you.
And just to note, it's a great sailing, that's just to get us ready for August 4th for the back, so.
Good evening, just a, a brief update, some of the items that you're gonna see here stayed the same because we cannot start them until school's out, but the, the contractor's just waiting to, to jump at the chance to get to these projects, so next week is going to start to be a very, very busy week and, and all throughout the summer, so this is just a couple updates with regards to the auditorium. So this is just a couple of updates with regards to the auditorium. You could see the structural foam on the left-hand side. We got the concrete down, and we're going through the structural foam, you could see it in the middle picture also. And then on your mezzanine level, you could kind of start seeing your levels there. So it's moving along. Once, again, once we, school lets out, they could start making all the noise they want and really start moving, you know, at a more, at a much quicker pace. We may have a couple items that have to be looked at with regards to, you know, some additional work, but BBS is looking at that with their structural engineer, and we'll have an answer as far as if there are or are not any issues that the board would need to be aware of. Again, if checks aren't being cut, I'm not going to put, you know, money spent, you know, at that point. I believe one contractor has put in a pay requisition, and that's about it. So with regards to the courtyard addition, it seems to be at a standstill, but that was resolved, and hopefully, starting at the end of this weekend into next week, we'll start moving on that aggressively. We did have little issues that had to be resolved, and so that's, hopefully, like I said, next week, we'll really start pushing. We started the demolition in the technology area, a lot of noisy work, but once the testing started, then we had to stop because it's right above your gym, and, I mean, right below your gym, and just couldn't continue working with that, didn't want to disturb the students. So again, next week, a lot of these, I'm gonna be saying this over and over again, with that cafeteria, obviously, we cannot take apart with, I believe, students at least having breakfast there, if I'm not mistaken, and so forth. So but that, again, contractor did survey the area, and they're ready to start moving on that.
Our team did a great job moving all the equipment out of the way.
Yes, they did.
Really nice job, and one day they were able to move all the, so none of our equipment. You have to be careful about, like, our compressors getting any kind of dust or any of that, you know, protecting what we already own and our investment that we have. And so our studio team did a beautiful job getting everything out so that's cleared and, you know, I grew up in an agricultural area, we'd say hoeing the row, so you hoe the row, so you got the rocks and the weeds out of the way so they can move very swiftly now, and we've also protected our investment. So I really congratulate Eric and his team and, you know, and Jennifer, her leadership worked. It really helped move things along, it was really working smarter, not harder, so.
I have to agree with the superintendent. Jennifer and Eric have helped out a great deal, and his staff has been excellent to work with. I've worked in many, many districts, and a lot of times you get, they put up a fight when they have to, you know, move things, especially at this time of year, but they've been nothing but cooperative, and, you know, it's something that's appreciated because it helps the project move along. So the mechanical upgrades, getting back to the mechanical upgrades, again, it's just, we have to wait until the students are out, and then we could start that. Same thing, again, with the site work. That's until, now this, we do see a change. Before, you saw just the footings and foundation, now we're actually seeing the building going up. You got your block walls going up, the structural steel on site, they're erecting the steel. And so it's actually starting to look like something and is moving along fairly well. We are still about a week behind, but he's started to move aggressively. Wednesday, they're gonna be back again, continuing with the concrete, the block walls, and continuing with the steel work. So that's moving along nicely. After that, again, vestibule, can't start until, you know, the students are out of the school. And that goes likewise with the gymnasium, the mechanical and the gymnasium. So, and windows, the window contractor has started his measurements of the windows at the elementary school. As you can see, they are in dire need of replacement. So that is something where, like I said, he's doing the measurements, and hopefully, they'll be in fabrication very soon, and we'll start working on that shortly. So I believe that's site work. Like I said, again, we're waiting for the end.
Barry has some samples he wants to show the Board of Education, and they'll finish up the rest.
There you go.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
No problem.
Mike, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
When is the, they're redoing the kitchen too, right? That's part of it, when does that start?
Yes. We are looking to get into some of the work within a week or so, but some of the stuff has, with the markouts and the, some of the equipment, it's gonna take a little while, but that will be done well before school starts back up. That's, you know, not a major project, but again, we're looking at a couple of different options with regards to ceiling tile, you know, whether, you know, we should move forward with replacing that or not and certain things. So we're working on that, but the contractor's looking to get in sometime next week.
Okay, thanks.
Hi. I'm just wondering what's the best way for me to do this, because I have several different carpet samples, several different fabric samples. It's probably best if I'm in the metal in the front there.
Can you give them one of the microphones?
If that's okay.
Do you hear that? Where's Stephanie?
I'm texting her right now.
She's gonna be freaking out that she's not here for this. Tell her we're gonna pick a carpet without.
Tell her we're picking a carpet.
I'm gonna pick it. It's gonna be brown.
And you like the blue.
And if I recall from the last meeting, that we really have to commit to something tonight if we're gonna avoid delays. So this is our chance, keep it on track. Right, Mike?
Yes.
Okay.
Can we do that?
You're in the library, huh? Norman Rockwell. Okay, so what we had discussed was bringing back some additional fabric samples in the black and red family. I have a certain selection here, which we discussed in the office, which is four combinations of different looks. And if you desire to look at more, I have more in that little black bag over there. But this is some that we picked today with our interiors department, Roger Smith and myself, to bring to you. Now, you know, we had talked last week about the, there's three elements really that we're talking about with the color. The curtain, the seating fabric, and the carpet, really, as the rest of the room remains in neutrals. Okay, so, you know, we have suggested and still recommend the red for the curtain. I now have the contractor's submittal of the fabric that would be selected for that. So I have this, I don't have large pieces, but I have this open to the red page of the reds. And I think we'd really be winding up in this family. Okay? So now if the curtain's red, you know, now we have the carpet and the seat. So, you know, we talked about the seat back being the black, and the seat bottom, the black. So now the seat, the body itself could go to the red, which actually, that was, that fabric was selected for that sample by the district, but I don't think it's really a red that I'm particularly fond of. So with the red curtain, this is a suggestion for bringing red into the carpet with black and gray. And the reason I'm putting it, you know, adjacent here is this is the paint coloration of the wall and the trim. So here's a black blend picking up the red and gray.
And that fabric is suggested for the seat?
This is a seating fabric, yeah. So I don't know, you know, you wanna pass things around, or you wanna get up and?
Sure.
Okay? So that's one combination, red curtain with the red in the carpet and the black.
Can you just put the carpet up so we can see? Is that blue in the carpet?
It's gray.
Gray?
Which would tie into the gray seating fabric color. And with the, and suggesting gray because the seat back is the solid black. Okay? Okay, so here's, it's another scenario again with the red curtain. Thank you. This one has two fabric options, again, a gray in the feel of the carpet. They were saying will tie nicely into the wall coloration and be a relationship to black, but not black. And then, you know, the seating fabric could be a strong and bold black. I know you had the red seats for thirty-five years, whether you wanna make a transition to, as we have the black presented first, and then the gray, and then a strong black. Well, this is a, you know, true scarlet. So, which is similar to what you had. Now that's an either-or seating fabric with this carpet as a suggestion. Okay? And again, an alternative to that would be a carpet like this. Again, all has a little tan that ties into the wall coloration. This is a blend of blacks and reds. So either one.
Can we say a black swatch?
Sure. That has a little diamond pattern in it with a tan accent.
Without responding to anything specific, I would suggest that we don't have the carpet and chairs the same color, because then it would look like a sea of black or a sea of red dispersely.
Right.
Versus a contrast of one and another.
That's why we had the red carpet with the gray seat and the red. But when we switch to the gray carpet, you could go either the black or the red. And this was, this was another alternative, you know, carpet in the gray family with the tans that has kind of a little bit of a wave effect to it, which, you know, we had that nautical theme going on, the sand.
I like the red carpet. Oh, that carpet? Yeah, I like that better than the other one personally. Because it ties in the wood on the walls.
Right, I like that.
And then the, underneath the seat area, the concrete gets painted, and, you know, this might tie in nicely to the tan of that. And we can put them with the.
You know, the red curtain, the red seats, the black and gray and tan carpet.
Now, did we rule out, because I don't recall if there was consent, did we rule out the tan carpet from last time when we said we wanted better black carpet? We did?
I have that carpet here.
Only because we had that conversation about trying to keep carpets clean, and you said that was the easiest to keep clean.
I didn't, no, I didn't, I didn't speak on the ability to keep carpets clean.
That was, it's all back to my right.
Provide you with a durable carpet, and, you know, things happen to carpet, no matter what you do. But I do have that tan, if, you know, that was an option, because that also would tie into this coloration and, you know, ties into the wall color, and you would have the red and the black, black would go with that as a neutral as well.
What do you guys think?
I like the black and the tan.
This one?
No. The carpeting.
No, the other one. With the red fabric?
With the red fabric, yeah. So the seats would be red, the curtain would be red, and you'd have the black and the tan for everything else.
So this carpet with this seating fabric?
You have then you have your colors.
Yeah, I definitely like that.
Now, which red of the curtain?
I would say.
It's easier to go from a distance.
Second row to our left, looks like it's.
Yes, yeah, I agree.
To your right, our left, looks like it's, but.
Regal red? That's what that one is, that's right. So now you're gonna have the, it's probably gonna be close together. You know, oh, wait, no, that's the curtain, that's far apart. This and this will be close, and you have the black stage front and the black stage, and then the stage curtain will be there.
And the tan on the wall.
That's really your brightest in comparison to what we were looking at the other day as the cherry.
Will you put the other seat? Did we have, how many seat colors did we have? Just those, just those two?
I have, I have thirty.
Is there one going around?
There was the light gray that was going around. There it is.
As a matter of full disclosure, I am slightly colorblind.
You were saying with this, with this carpet? No, it doesn't really.
So you wanna know why the purple carpet is what we're going with?
That was why we, you know, if we went with the red, you know, we were saying that would be more in the black seat, yeah.
Gray doesn't work.
No, I definitely like the carpet with the swirls in it, because it has that, kind of looks like ocean-y, bottom of the ocean.
Which will tie into this on the wall.
That's why I think it's.
And the shells.
But I think the red seats on that will be maybe too contrasting. I like the red curtain. I think that'll be a nice classic pop of color, but I think maybe the darker seat might be too dark.
Well, you know, you have to realize that the.
The seat is black as well.
Yeah, there's a lot of black in the seats already.
It's really just the back and the seat. When you're sitting in it, not much fabric showing at all.
This is all a brighter than what's on this.
But, you know, those, that is one grouping, if, I said, if you'd like to see, well, I have a real strong red solid for carpet too, if you just, if you wanna see.
Do you have any other black carpets besides that?
I have a bunch, yeah.
Just to see. What would you rather see?
I got nothing.
You got nothing, really? Why, because it's another red, it's a long red?
Red is a tough, tough color in terms of.
Do you feel it's too scarlet enough, a true red enough?
Whatever. Say it, it's not, nothing's jumping at me. Sorry, that's it, that's all I can say.
I like the, I like the one with the facial attachment.
I wouldn't have your carpet competing with your curtain too. I think you want your carpet to be one of your, you know, really, up to you guys.
No.
I think if you went to, you know, to the red in the carpet, you're gonna be switching back to the black or gray in the seat.
Right.
What do you think, Sue?
I like that carpet that we picked. I like, I like that it's got the black and it's bringing in the, bringing in the tan.
And then, you know, the strong black will be in the body of the seat, so it's not like, you know, it's just taking a piece of the color. But this will be here. The stage surface itself is black, right, which projects beyond the percinium opening. And then all of the back curtains are black, solid black. So, you know, when the curtains open, we'd be seeing the black background curtains generally.
Can I ask you a favor? And I'm in the minority, I think, on this one, but do you mind just taking the tan carpet and putting it underneath the red fabric?
This one?
Careful. I'm just thinking it would lighten up the space, and it would show less of the dirt and, no, I mean, put it so we can, if you put it on the side, we could see it.
I'm sorry?
It's okay. Some of us are really short, so we've none go.
Now, the black also went with that too.
I think I liked the carpet we had up there before, the gray and the tan wave kind of.
Yeah, that.
The wave, it'll show less dirt.
Yeah, I like that.
I do think the texture on that one will hide more spills.
I'm sorry, what?
I think the texture on that one will hide spills a little bit more.
Which one, the right or left? Left, oh, the pattern?
And the walk after, after a while. The walk after, after a while. Any of these I can, these are out there. Nothing here caught your eye?
No, I'm not that bad with those patterns at all. There's some really beautiful patterned rugs, we're just not...
And this was to give you, you know, your scarlet, scarlet.
What do you think, Tom? Darker seat than that red? You like the black seat?
I do.
What seat fabric do you like, Sue?
Is this the right red?
Do you have any other red fabric?
But I think it's a little, you know, a little brighter.
Maybe not even just plain?
Yes.
That's the black curtain.
That's a little brighter red. That's closer to our...
Those are really the ones that, you know, then it gets to be...
In terms of the fabrics you're showing us, can they all be delivered in time not to hold up the construction in the auditorium? Yes, we're under strict orders by Mike not to hold it up. Can't order fabric that's gonna take four months.
Mine, 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 mine just left you.
These are all in the same, uh, these are all in the same lead time range. The, the plain one is fifty-six days and, and the patterns are sixty-three days, so they're a few days apart.
Okay.
And, uh, what happens is they have to be treated for fire retardancy. So, even though this is your basic quick ship, you know, available off-the-shelf fabric, it still needs to be treated, um, for fire retardancy, so... I might ask them for a few dollars back if he's pick one of these plain, plain ones. And I have this one that you had this week, you know, classic. You don't want to see more blacks, right?
No. And we gotta bring some red in.
Way too dark, a lot of black blobs, you took that back.
So, one of the, one of the reds, guys, for the seats? You want to go with the brighter one?
It's closer to our color. So, I would, I would say that's a truer representation of school color, the one on the left, and it's not as much of a dead red.
It's just people have been saying, you know, color is a name or whatever, this one's actually called scarlet and this is called, you know, cardinal, but, um, you know, appearance is, is what you're looking for. Which actually, you know, with the brighter curtain, that one's pretty close to the bright curtain. You know, from the distance, you'll see it.
Come on, you gotta win. You don't like any of it.
Nope, can't do it.
beige carpet out?
Beige carpet's out.
All of these are...
Do you like the red?
The first red's fine, yeah.
The red on the left?
Yeah, well, yeah, that red, that brighter red.
So, not the first one, I show you.
The cardinal red.
So, is the issue the carpet?
Yeah, it, it, it's...
Which has nothing to do with ordering the seats if you still want to...
I mean, I think it's ugly.
Yeah, I'm not feeling it, but, you know, it's not...
Were there any?
No.
I've seen a lot of carpets that have patterns like diamond or other types of patterns that kind of, so you couldn't see as much of the dirt. Were any of those in consideration at all versus kind of these semi... Or no?
They all seem to be in the same vein, I kind of like splatter paint.
Yeah, just, you know, the seating is what's critical for the timing right now, if you want to look at more carpets going forward.
I think that red's good for seating.
I agree.
Personally, I think the black with the little, I don't know where, I don't know where beige is coming from all, all the time, it keeps coming up to us, even before it was that burgundy red and beige, I don't, just kind of mind boggle. So, the black that you had up before with the...
That had a relationship to the overall color of the room.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I didn't get that either, but that's just, it's just me. So, the black before that you had up with the beige triangles, if that had black with a red in it, that would almost be like perfect, but we don't have that on.
It doesn't, yeah.
So, like that one there, if that had red...
It'd be too much black, though.
Yeah.
Do you have that in the brighter red?
I think the carpet's pretty good.
They have that in a, in a red, but it was more like, it was more like this red.
All right, so we, we picked, the, the most important decision tonight was picking the fabric for the chairs, so we don't hold that out.
We'll get that on order.
So...
Now, do you agree with the black?
Black on the side, yes, and the red. So, how about we just get that going and not worry about the carpet this meeting? Unless, unless you guys love the carpet, I, I, I'm not a fan, but if the four of you love the carpet, I'll...
This is a simple I ordered that did not arrive.
Well, I like the carpet, but I don't like the seats, and so I...
Which should arrive tomorrow.
You don't like the red?
But it's the black and it has a red fleck in it.
But I don't think we're gonna be unanimous, because seven people with seven different tastes, I like the original. You know what I mean? I don't, I don't, I think that if we wait for consensus...
Right, it won't happen. I just wish we had, I wish we had better choices, because the carpets, I don't think we have great choices on it.
What about this, this one didn't come, but this one didn't come, but it's got a little red flack in it.
Yes, got a little red flack in the carpet.
That's a seating fabric.
This is seating fabric.
Well, because she just asked if the black one had a red fleck.
We can't have black fabric in a black floor.
I agree.
You know, it's just very, very dark. Like something like this.
If that was a rug, it would've been perfect.
Like, I, this is the kind of rug that I think...
Right, you switch to the red floor.
I, I think, I think we're looking at saying, you know, rugs with patterns like this versus kind of...
Yeah, that's this, uh, that's the seating fabric, but that's this, that's this seating fabric.
I think folks were, were excited because they thought these were rugs that you were showing us, because there are rugs that come in those kinds of patterns.
Okay.
We on the back.
If we were to choose a, a seating fabric tonight, how much time would we have to choose the carpet and the, the curtain?
We, we agree with the curtain, we'll get the, with the curtain.
There's been no submissions made on the, on the, on the carpets as yet, so, you know, as we continue to look, we'll need to look at availability and lead time and, you know, when the, when the room is gonna be ready for it. Not for quite a while. Carpet has a shorter turnaround than the seats, you know, the seats are long, they have to be manufactured.
So, it sounds like we have...
So, you're looking for a carpet with a, a little fleck in it, mostly solid, more like, you know, a classic pattern with a small...
I, I think the desire is to see a wider variety of types, visual types of carpet, because I think we saw a lot of very similar stuff tonight, if that makes sense, but it sounds like, it sounds like the majority are comfortable with the red fabric and the red curtain. And if that's the case, then we're not gonna hold up the finished product in the auditorium and maybe we just put that to bed right now?
Yes, Susan, can we pull everybody for that?
Yeah, I, okay. You good with the red carpet, the red fabric and the red curtain?
Yes.
I am too.
I am too.
I am too, yes.
Abstain. No, I, I am too.
I, I don't think we're gonna reach a unanimous verdict, so I'm, I'm, you guys have been in this district longer than me, I defer to you. I've been consistent that I like the original design, so...
Okay, so we got two out of three.
I do, that was my hand.
So, Mike, we got the carpet and then we've got the fabric for the seat and the curtain. Those two things, okay?
So, one other question on the seat. There is, there is a wood arm, right? And then, on the aisle sides, there's a wood end panel, which, uh, it won't have a plastic surround like this, it'll just be solid wood end panel. But that, right now, is, uh, you know, we were looking at the teak color when we had the blues. It also comes in ebony and black, so if you want the, the arms to be black and this end panel to be black, so that, uh, the seat bodies are all...
The wood up there would be lighter than what we see on the chair right now, is that accurate? The wood on the display, color on the display is...
It's this, it's this color. Is it, that's that color?
Do you want wood or do you, you want the wood look or do you want it to be black?
I like the wood look, because I think the black's just, it's a long...
There's other pieces of wood in the room.
I, you know what?
The balcony edge has a wood trim, the, um, the sound wall, the desk, and the desk is gonna be all this, this coloration of wood. I just wanted to give you the opportunity, if you wanted that to be black as well.
So, it'd tie in together with the other element, some of the other elements?
This ties to other pieces of wood in the room, yeah, and those would remain.
Does it change the cost? Does it change the cost?
That's what I said before, if you're picking, uh, this seat fabric is, is a more basic fabric, and I said I would ask them for some money back.
So, that's cheaper, I'm asking if the wood, if it's wood versus no wood, doesn't change the cost of seating?
No, no, this, this is all wood, it's just the stain color.
Oh, okay.
For, uh, black ebony stain on maple versus teak on maple. So, it's a, it's a wood, it's a hardwood, um, armrest.
Do you want to go around the table?
I, I like, I like the wood color.
The teak.
Yeah.
I like the wood. Sitting?
It's fine.
Okay?
I'm good with the wood.
Wood. I do.
Ebony and...
Wood.
All right.
We'll work on carpet.
All right, so you've got five, five woods and one ebony, so...
Go on with that.
I think...
Does anybody else like the carpet? Am I the only one that likes the carpet?
No.
You don't like the carpet?
I like the carpet.
We don't have to choose tonight, I just don't think we've got a wide variety. Thank you for bringing all the samples.
Well, when you, when you bring the other carpet samples back, which I assume is what we're asking him to do?
Bring that one back for her.
Bring the fabric and that?
Bring the, the, the two that we debated on, well, yeah, and the red one too, well, no, we're not gonna have red with red, so the two that we debated on as well. That one, yeah.
The tan and that one.
Because Chris liked the tan and the...
But you know what, though? If no one else likes the tan, then just leave it in the van, don't bring it out. Honestly, leave it in the van, that could be our little theme song.
Do you like that better?
If I, if I would.
Do you like that better?
No.
If it was, if it was a little bit darker, it might be...
It's a lot of gray.
I don't mind that one. I don't mind that one.
You know, seven people and how many pieces of material in different combinations you can have, you know?
We got, we got two major pieces agreed on tonight, I say, let's just move on now, we've got two wins, let's move to the next, we have a long agenda here, let's move on.
We like that one on top, Susan, bring that one back. Some of us like that. No, and, and the one you just, yeah, I like the both.
And the tan. Where's the tan out?
I think the tan is out, we want some more black in the room.
I, I, am I accurate that I was the only one that liked the tan? Was part of the original design, okay.
Yes, you're done.
So, tan out.
But you're done.
I'm done. I'm fine with that.
Me too. Could, could be me on the next one.
Are you sure you bring the red so we can see it all together?
I was like, darn, I was just gonna, I was just gonna abstain.
Okay, thank you very much.
If you'll give me a minute, I'm just gonna go get a few different computer designs, we'll bring them in. Choose those for next year.
Would you like to prove the mousepad?
Whatever it takes. All right. So, we're wrapping up, um, what turned out to be a pretty good year in terms of technology, lots of improvements, I think things are, are going well by most measures. Um, we do have some, some significant projects planned for the summer, but, um, as of now, of course, we're sending out a lot of email blasts and notices, information about events taking place. Uh, the board meeting turnaround time, the posting of the videos has improved significantly since I started posting it to YouTube directly. It is still on the, um, the LTV site, but it takes them a day or two longer, and we are back to putting it on the CTV site as well, um, since the board, um, voted to record the entire meeting, CTV is, is now playing the, the meetings as well. Okay? Um, the website on the new, the work on the new website, uh, is, is going well, um, looking to do what, what I'm calling a soft launch, uh, early July, because it's definitely going to be something that's going to be tweaked throughout the entire summer, so please, the day it goes live, don't scream and yell, it, it will be cleaned up and changed and fixed and adjusted and everything else, but I think...
Well, I know the colors are good.
Please do. But actually, the, 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 a couple of people that were at the communications committee meeting the other night did, um, see, sampled the new website and I think, um, they thought it was a favorable improvement. A lot of the changes that they had spoken about in previous meetings, we were able to implement and, and some additional suggestions, um, hopefully we'll, we'll make it into it as well, so we're in good shape with regard to the...
We like our auditors, we, we got audited by New York State this year and our auditors really loved our website because we have so, it's like Ragout, we have so much in there. It's very typical for our...
No, say it's not so.
They were, so it was nice to make the New York State auditors happy with our, our website, so just pulling on record for that. That's like, we like stuff. It's nice to make auditors happy.
All right, and, um, so this year, we're gonna be kind of brave, um, we're going to attempt to livestream the graduation ceremony from Pearson Hill, so, um, fingers crossed that will go well.
Okay, good.
A link will be made available prior to graduation day, I'll put it on the website, we'll send a notice home, um, and people will be able to watch on their computers, on their devices, um, so hopefully it will go well. We, we did some testing Friday at work, we'll do some more testing, uh, throughout the week to make sure that everything is going to work properly and if the weather cooperates, we'll be in good shape, um, for Saturday. And, uh, we've confirmed that CTV will also have a representative here again who will videotape the ceremony as he does every year, um, and they've offered to provide copies of the, um, ceremony to anybody who, who requests one, so we can get copies made from them as well.
There's a note on there too, the, um, the seniors will be photographed by staff members, um, from here at Sag Harbor School as they are getting their diploma and then superintendent available out to the families, and sometimes it's more than one family, so... This is, um, my item, but we're getting a lot of help across the district, we did this, we started this last year, we brought everybody to the table, we're developing a comprehensive calendar, uh, that meeting's gonna take place this week, so, um, parents should by the end of the week be able to start looking, to making their plans, these parents are looking to plan, you know, their vacations for the coming school year, um, you know, family gatherings, trips, that kind of thing, and just planning for their children, so we'll be making that master calendar in the coming week, um, and we bring our music department together, our guidance department together, um, our administrators, our athletic department, and, um, the power's in the conversation when we do this, because everybody's event is a priority, absolutely, so, um, Mr. Branoff will, will let everybody know it's not athletics, it's most important, it's we're gonna work collaboratively and, uh, communicate those events on, on the calendar, so we'll include middle school orientation, first day of school testing, homecoming, musicals, plays, the auditions, uh, so the parents again can, uh, do the planning and the concert dates, college application nights, the college fair, the financial aid night, uh, curriculum night, parent teacher conferences, um, we also will be adding later in the year, um, the August sports physicals, because those have to be decided by the reorg meeting, um, who our school physician's going to be. As we add our club advisors, um, which will have, some will happen at the reorganizational meeting, but some will also be happening, um, in August, because folks don't always say that, you know, I'm, you know, I'm dying to be the club advisor, they, they give it some thought and they weigh in, so our coaching positions, our club advisors, so those will come up, and as soon as they do, we'll make sure to get, um, their, their events on the calendar as well. And, um, maybe Tommy John can weigh in with me, um, I want to thank our legislators, our local legislators, Senator Fred Thiel, Jr., and Senator... The staff who are so wonderful in helping support Sag Harbor Schools in the passage of the legislation, and this is how the legislation read, "to expend the proceeds of certain bonds issued by the district for an object or purpose that differs from the original object." This does not mean, the district does not need to act on this legislation, but because they were, they were ending their, their session, um, the Board of Education, um, wanted to have that, those options open to them, so depending on what course we follow, this gives, this opens up the options for the district, so, um, I really want to thank them, because they did this, what, in, in nine, was it nine days to nine hours?
Seventeen days.
Seventeen days.
Seventeen days, uh, three committees from the Assembly, three committees from the Senate, and, uh, so...
And they were wonderful, keeping, you know, Jennifer and I updated, so we can keep the board updated. And again, they don't have to act on the option, but you have the options, since they are not, they won't be coming back into session for months and months. And these are the updating, upcoming district dates. We're going to have our annual, we start with a reorganizational meeting, we'll be swearing in our, our new board member, and be making the appointments for the coming year, and then we turn and have a regular business meeting. On July 18th and 19th, the Board of Education will be having their goal setting for the 16th, 17th school year. On the 20th, the Board of Education will be working with the New York State School Boards Association with the, with the new school board. And on August 15th and August 29th, we'll be having Board of Education business meetings, and also we'll be doing, because we have so much business to be done, you know, we have to make, we have to do both as businesses, but also the 29th will be slash our educational meeting, where we'll have the opportunity to look at our New York State Department of Education data review, because they have promised, they haven't just said, but they have promised that they will, will deliver back our data to us. So we're anxious to see that data.
Katie, I would just add, because sometimes, I think there are questions that float around about this, I would anticipate that in July and August, we'll also have executive sessions on top of this, because we currently are in contract negotiations with several of our bargaining units, plus we're working on MOAs.
Yes.
So there will be other meetings that come up, that are executive session, because they're contractual in nature, but we'll be busy this summer with those as well.
Yes, because we do have the teachers, the teaching, the associate center, our custodians are, are in the board contract, we're in contract negotiations at this time, yeah. Yeah.
Do we have the times for the goals and retreat? Do we have the times for those meetings yet?
The retreat is six, 6:00 p.m. Six to 10:00.
Six to 10:00 is the retreat.
And then the goal setting, so when's that start? Seven, six?
I think it's 6:30 for both of those nights, so.
6:30?
Thank you.
That, that will have to be established after our reorganizational meeting.
Yeah, that's when it gets established.
Because I can just set that, but I can't until I have a new board president. I can just make that as a note.
Okay. We need to talk about the structure of that.
Yeah, yeah. Our, the president, the president of the Board of Education actually sets the agenda, I just make a recommendation.
Okay.
Okay, that's it for your report? Okay. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda items. Can I have a motion for consent agenda items four through 23, please?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Do we know where the library books are going?
Cool.
Yay! Hey, that's what I was hoping we did.
Yeah.
She's still taking them?
Yeah, you might not, you might not have been here, but, um-
Yeah. During the course of the year, we've done several of these, where we've confirmed they're going to-
Yeah, just asking.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carry. Could I have a motion for special education actions 24 through 29, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion's carry. Can I have a motion for personnel actions number 30 through 47? And there's an addendum to 37, right? Oh, no.
And 38.
And 38, and 38.
Can I ask that you take items 44 separately, please?
Forty, okay, so then-
Because I have to refuse myself from that?
All right, so let me take items 30 through 43 then first.
Okay. So moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I just want to acknowledge the employees who are retiring and resigning. I wish them luck, thank them for the years of service in our district, and thank them for the impact they made on children's lives.
Any further discussion?
Second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion's carry. Can I have a motion for item number 44, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstain? One, aye. For those that don't know, I'm doing it because that happens to be my daughter.
All right, so motion carries. Can I have a motion for items 45 through 47 then?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next, on our agenda is committee report, reports? Athletic committee?
We're finished for the year.
Okay. Audit committee? There's no report. Communications committee?
Yeah, as I reported earlier, we met last week to review the D website, so we're done for the year as well.
Okay. Community coalition?
I know that they're going to be having a meeting on the 29th of next week, but I don't, I did not attend a lot. Do you attend there? I'm definitely not close as well.
Educational facilities planning committee?
We met on June 1st. We did actually look at the auditorium finishes. At the time, we only were able to, we only saw the first presentation. Everyone seemed to like the first presentation, but since then, things have changed.
Mass Shashimewat Park, forward?
Uh, no report.
Okay. Nutrition, wellness, health, and safety committee?
Uh, we have not met since the last time we spoke, but we do have the policy draft finished, ready for review, so I will send that along. I, who is on the policy committee? Should I send it to, just you?
Well, yeah, because we're going to be changing over in two weeks, so.
Got it.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Policy committee?
I'm going to be asking at the July 5th reorganizational meeting for, to expedite a policy committee for the summer, so that we can continue-
Do you mean just meeting more frequently during the summer?
Well, to, to start-
We have to create a new one, right?
Or creating a new, a new committee early?
To start the policy early, so that we can do summer work. Because normally we set those in the end of August.
Right.
But we have, we have a lot of work to do.
Wall of honor committee?
We are still on track to adopt that one coming. We have a-
Items for discussion, substitute daily rate for 2015, well, I guess I should say 16, 17 school year. I think some of our neighboring districts are raising their rates, and so we should consider raising ours, so we can be competitive.
Do we have that data from the other districts, so we can compare?
We get, we get, we did receive information about, what was it? Was it Southampton we teach information from?
On the Wednesday letter.
We have a chart of like this, this surrounding districts somewhat, so we can, do we know?
Perhaps, perhaps we can get that information?
We should have it for this time. We need to have it for this discussion.
All right.
Yeah, I have all that information, and I will provide that to you. I think I just provided you the Southampton rate, which they did increase their rate based on the number of days the teachers actually worked for them, and based on if they're retired teachers versus teachers that have, have not. So I can put a chart together and send you all the additional information that I already sent you with, with the Wednesday letter.
Okay.
We need the data. We have one school.
Yeah, I think, I think the Wednesday letter included one or two districts, but we really need a more comprehensive.
My caucus gone up as well.
Yeah, for that.
And so that might be something to try for, for the-
It's important to have the data before we make our decisions.
So the reorg needs to be there, yeah, so, yeah.
And you don't have to set it for the reorg, it could be summer, for a discussion.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay, any other items for discussion, guys? Okay, any old business? Awesome. Okay, public input two. Does anyone want to speak at public input two? Okay, we got one. Public input two is reserved for comments related to agenda and non-agenda items, and does not require signup. Comments should be addressed to the board, not to other members of the public, and we ask you keep your comments, question and answer periods no longer than five minutes. We respectfully ask that all speakers conduct themselves in a civil and respectful manner. Please do not comment about any individual or position in the district in such a way that would allow for identification of that individual, and remember, you are being videotaped.
Thank you, Mrs. Consava. My name is Greg Burton, and I was here two weeks ago to ask questions about the artificial turf field. I just read again another article in 27 East about Edwina Fungal and the Perfect Earth Project coming in last week, and suggesting that her, actually, I guess donating services and time and effort to try to continue to use the natural turf field out there. Then, I, I've played on natural turf fields all my life, and I've been doing outside sports, so I like that, and I like the idea. But then I went onto her site and had some sort of contradictory requests, or actually suggestions for using turf. One is that during the summer, the grass be three and a half to four inches long, which is actually too long to actually use for field sports. Then it says in early autumn, you're supposed to cut the field, the grass down to one to one and a half inches, which means that it's too short for field sports. And it talks about watering the grass, and I don't think we have an irrigation system out there, which means we're going to have to get an irrigation system out there. It also says that you can try to do without fertilization, except for the fact that this field does get used a lot. It also says that if you're going to use the field, natural turf, you can't use it immediately after rain, or even they're saying, I think, eight or 12 hours after rain, which is more problematic. And then we have the seasonality in that during the winter, there are days when you would like to try to get outside, and there again, you're sort of stymied with the fact that you've just cut down the, the grass down to one, one and a half inches, and that you're not supposed to be walking on it. So I, I don't see the, that concept being viable for the field out there, which is going to be used by hundreds of students on a regular basis. So I'm, I'm wondering how that could have been received and accepted, considering the problems that are inherent in having natural turf. Can I ask the board that question? Is that part of?
We haven't accepted any.
Oh, you haven't?
No.
Okay, well, my suggestion is, we should try what we can do to get this artificial turf in. If it means finding more bidders, means cutting out that track on the outside, finding other sources of funds for that extra few hundred thousand dollars. This brings me back to what I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, when we were talking, the board was talking about finding $645,000 for its own projects, and then looking at something that was approved three years ago by the voters, by a pretty significant margin, and having now hearing the most recent 27 East article, that the assemblymen are now trying to find ways to reallocate the funds that were originally allocated toward this artificial turf. It sort of ruins the whole concept of having a democratic vote for these things. If you can have something approved by a large margin of a small, you know, small number of people, over a thousand people out of 2,000 people who are residents in the district voted on this thing, and they came to the conclusion as a group that there should be an artificial turf field out there, and now the board, and I don't know how this is going about, going to happen, but all of a sudden, we're going to reallocate something that was voted on by the voters. I'm very confused and actually sort of frustrated on this, and I'm wondering if there's any input that the board can give me as to how that can happen, and how are we going to make that decision?
Well, the, the, the fact that that legislation was passed allows us the option. It doesn't mean that's the decision that has been made.
Okay.
For one.